Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and this special meeting of the San Point Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Grant Simmons, Mo's Dunkle, Slate Camp, Amelia Boyd, and Wayne Benner. Commissioner Ben McGrann is absent. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands on a nation under your God.
Thank you. Um. Having no people here, we can skip over listening devices announcements. Are there any general announcements from Commissioners and or city staff?
Mister Chairman, just wanted to let the, or remind the Commission, you had scheduled the public hearing for the comprehensive plan on the eighteenth, and we had to move the rezoning hearings, so that has been published for your August first meeting.
Okay.
So we will. Which one for the August first?
August first is a comprehensive plan.
And that's at that meeting, that's when that would be our final approval on that document, is that correct?
Likely your recommendation to sit.
To the City Council, correct, yes. Yep. Thank you. Any other announcements?
No.
Alrighty. First on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the June twentieth, twenty-three regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I, I, I opposed.
I'm not voting as I was not here. Motion passes. Uh, old business. Next on the agenda is a continuing discussion and direction on possible code changes to accessory structures. I will now yield the Florida City Planner Amy Twetton for an introduction of this agenda item.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, just wanted to follow, follow up. Um, from our last meeting, just so that it doesn't get, um, we lose track of where we were. Um, so what the Commission had asked for were some details on what is being built currently. So, um, with the help of Sarah, we collected some data over the past from June, June, July, twenty-one through twenty-two, and then twenty-two through twenty-three for comparison. So this is A U permits twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-three. Um, one thing to keep in mind is this is the our best ability to track them. There are ones that somehow get in the system as an addition or a remodel, so likely the numbers could be higher than this. Uh, but these are what we believe are, um, the new permits issued. And just to clarify also, these are A U permits issued. This does not necessarily equate to permits in this or dwelling units built that year. Some of them are taking quite a while to either get to the point of actually part of submitting and actually completing the structure. So we've been having the discussion on building heights, and, um, this is just a chart showing over time the median uh, height of detached accessory dwelling units. So they are getting slightly larger, taller, I should say. Uh, and this is, um, twenty-one to twenty-two um, sizes uh, versus twenty-two to twenty-three, and it was in twenty-one that those changes were made to increase it to nine hundred square feet. Um, and so this is just showing we are getting more larger ADUs being, um, requested. And then, just because we're talking about height in relation to principal structure, um, Sarah's put together this information. These are from existing permits. So these are the Walnut Street houses and ADUs. Um, and here you can see this one. Actually, it's just as funny because this one turns out to be about twenty-five percent. They use twenty-five percent taller than the house in this situation. And that was the number we started with, and we kind of thought, well, maybe that's too restrictive. Uh, but this is an example of what that looks like, and those ADUs are less than five hundred square feet. Uh, this is an example of an A D U. And again, what's interesting is this is another corner example. Where the A D U, but it the A D U is almost twice as big as the house. Again, it's a one-story house. And the A D U is almost two stories. It's still under that twenty-three or twenty-six max. But if we had that relationship built in, so if we, if the code was one and a half times or twenty-six feet, whichever is less, this, this A D U would have been required to be slightly shorter. This is one that does a good, uh, job of showing compatible materials. And also, um, this is one, it's set back from the house. And the height is twenty-three feet, but it is not overpower, it looks like it's not much taller than, uh, the house on the property.
Question, if I may, on that, the, just out of curiosity, is that garage in, uh, in use by the resident of the home or the resident of the A D U?
I.
Does it, and does it matter in any way from our perspective?
Well, again, the, um, what's interesting is this is on an alley, so the alley actually long runs along the side, as you can see of the properties. The A D U is actually parallel to the alley. Um, what, what the code requires is you have one off-street parking space for the principal residence and one for the uh, A D U. That's what the code currently requires. But no, do we track who is using what? We don't, because again, so many garages are never used to store vehicles. Uh, this is another one where the A D U is taller than the house. Not appreciably so, and because it's set behind the house, you can, from the street view, the, the A D U is on an alley, the street view from, and this picture, you can see the house from the alley, but from the street, you can't see the A D U behind the house. And then this is the one that, uh, we've talked about. This again is probably twice the height of the existing principal structure. And this is an example of a two-story house with a two-story A D U that is not as tall, and it's a little hard to see, but they hadn't completed. This is on Vina. You can see the construction back here, um, but it is not as tall as the principal structure and less than twenty-six feet. Uh, so a few questions based on the discussion, uh, from last time, but for the last time, kind of what we, we came with very conservative. What if we change the height limit of a A D U to, uh, twenty, not to be more than twenty-five percent of the, the principles? Yeah, twenty-five percent greater than the principal structure or twenty-six feet. And then I think through the discussion with the Commission, it was maybe up to fifty percent, and then the limit of twenty-six feet. And I think that was the direction that the Commission was thinking. Yes. Um. Does twenty-six feet still seem a reasonable height based on what we are seeing?
We had footed that, the, the twenty-six to a foot to a, a story and a half, right?
Sure. Well, let's see if there's a good example here.
Because it would be the A D U height for a story and a half.
Twenty-six foot could be a full two-story.
It's darn close, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you had a story and a half home, you would be at twenty-six feet.
Right.
Okay.
But again, what it would limit is something, if you only had a twelve or fourteen-foot tall house, you'd be limited to twenty-one feet, not the full twenty-six feet for an A D U. Just to keep that proportionality to the principal structure. It'll still, still be taller, but not not dwarf, I guess, the principal structure. Um, and then we, we did have the discussion, but I wasn't sure the direction of the, where the Commission was thinking uh, in terms of parking. So again, the current code requires one parking space for the principal residence and one parking space for the accessory dwelling unit. Um, there was some discussion that we shouldn't require parking for an accessory dwelling unit, and I just wanted to bring that back to see, um, if that, if I heard that right, or.
We range, no, we ranged the gambit on it from get rid of it completely to have one for every bedroom.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't believe we had a decision on that one. Somebody that, um, spoke from the public had an emphasis on the parking space being a factor in in what people build. If there's a parking space requirement, then it made it to where maybe we ended up with something we didn't want, or if there wasn't one, then we ended up with something we didn't want. I, I can't remember exactly what the.
Or I think, I think the comment was maybe you require it if there's a two-story structure.
Yeah, exactly.
So that if you don't want to have to ride a parking space, you would build a maybe you'd be more likely to build a single story. I think that was her kind of thought, but, um, you know, again, even two-story A D Us. We, you know, we can't force them to use that garage to park.
As a garage. So what are you looking for from us at this time? Anything?
I guess I just wanted to confirm whether we are, whether we should just stick with, um, the current requirement, which is one for one, which is one for the dwell, one for each dwelling. Uh, or we want to just require one for the principal residence.
We're one for one now, right?
Right. One for one now.
Isn't it, I thought it was one to one and a half.
No, it's one, you need one space for the principal, one space for the A D U.
Okay, so refresh my memory on the one and a half. Is that a?
You might be making it up.
I might be, but seems to me we've had that conversation before here where.
I think that used to be in, like in a commercial, so didn't it? We had that one and a half for, there was, there was some formula there, but.
For calculating parking?
Parking, yeah.
No, I'm not sure.
Okay.
If I may.
Yes, you may.
Um, my thoughts are if you're going to have an A D U in the alley somewhere, um, it makes sense to provide parking, especially when some streets are just loaded with with cars and lack of parking for residents. And I, from, if I understand correctly from the survey, that was one of the biggest concerns from the public was parking.
Yeah, there was parking from both sides. There was, we shouldn't require parking because it's a disincentive. And there was, we should require parking and that it's maintained year round. Which, as Fonda pointed out, was, it's very, very difficult to.
Yeah, enforce, yeah.
And one thing for the Commission might want to keep in mind, too, is our rules in the winter time regarding.
Oh, with the swab.
Yeah. You've got to be on one side of the street, so we've removed fifty percent of the curve from the street for parking throughout the winter.
Right.
We don't really have any data on, I mean, it just feels like parking's gotten worse. But endemically has it? I mean, I, I assume it has, but to what extent?
Do you have a microphone?
I, I do have a microphone right here. Sorry, this thing, it was picking up all kinds of weird sounds, I was just moved.
I can see it.
Yeah.
Has it gotten worse? I don't, I don't know. I think in certain areas it has.
I, my op would be not to, not to change the one for one now. The question to me is, do we want to add an additional? Which is if you're now adding two for the additional and one for the primary, it seems a little lopsided in terms of equity anyway. So my vote, not knowing more than I do now, we don't have to decide tonight, right?
No, you don't have to decide tonight.
Would be not to change it.
I agree. I agree with that.
I think I'm comfortable that way, too.
As, as in my.
Calls for service.
Hi.
You can have police pull data.
Right.
Call for service.
I'd be curious.
About parking issues.
Yeah.
And they can map it out of their system, so we could look at the difference between parking issues in the commercial court versus residential or any.
Yeah, and if we're up like
In overtime.
Fifty percent complaints on a two-year basis, that's an interesting piece of data that'd be useful.
And if I might add one other thing somewhat related, um, and I don't know how it's written in our code right now, but I know one of the things that I too frequently see is that people are permanently using parking spaces that block sidewalks. Uh, and it's not like it's an occasional thing. It's that is where they park their car.
In the driveway.
Over top of it. In a driveway, but there's not room to get the car there, so it blocks a sidewalk. There's a lot of that um, in areas that particularly, as I probably have substandard streets is what they are. They're not fully developed, those streets, but what, what does our code address, I'm going to assume that's something that is listed somewhere as not allowed.
It, it is not allowed.
Right.
Um, it, it just is, um.
Another thing.
It's, it's an enforcement.
It's not a high priority enforcement issue.
Uh, it's a common enforcement.
Is it?
For the Community Resource Officer, so we get a lot of complaints about that on the engaged Sandpoint app. And they actually deal with that quite frequently.
And I would think that might be something that should actually be addressed in the A D U parking requirement, that it might even specifically address that issue.
Right, yeah, definitely the placement of, um, currently the, the, um, detached A D U is going to have to be in the backyard. So you can't have it in line with the house, so there's not enough room to park your car.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I brought it up at the last meeting with parking being such a premium. Also, this time of year, there's trailers and boats and campers, and those are taking two and a half to three spaces on the street, so even despite, you know, without the winter time, we still have all of that mess in our streets. Um, so that's why I think this one-to-one thing is something that is still needed as well. Another justification, I guess.
Okay. That sounds like a fairly strong consensus, if that's enough.
Yeah.
Direction for what you were looking for.
Um, and then just the other, um, discussion was on architectural compatibility. Um, and as Heather mentioned, the Commission is happy to come up with what really are the important features to incorporate in the code to make it, or is it roof pitch? Is it windows? Is it, what is it? Is it materials? Um. So what, and then we'll provide illustrations as well, just to make it really clear what we're talking, like, this is good, this is not so good.
Sweet.
Do you have that, um, excuse me, Commissioner Hastings, go ahead. Do you have that, um, language that was in one of your emails from the Coeur d'Alene?
Yep, let's see here, let's see if I can find.
Excuse me. While Amy's looking at that, if I may, Mister Chair.
Please.
I just wanted to bring up, are we set on nine hundred square feet? I've been racking my brain, and it's really been something on my mind about, does it need to be that big? We have homes that are nine hundred square feet. Do we need A D U that size? Does it, should we go smaller? I was talking to Amy about this. Um, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are on that, but it's been weighing on my mind. I think nine hundred square feet is quite excessive.
Yeah, I've been thinking the same thing, and she's pulling up some language about the size of A D Us in Coeur d'Alene, pardon me. But you know, it's, it's misleading. It's nine hundred square feet per story. So then you're at eighteen.
Hmm. Oh, really?
They count, they count both floors as square footage.
What we count is, I mean, we'll look at lot coverage, but yes, you could have a garage under a nine hundred square foot A D U. So your whole floor area is eighteen hundred, yeah, but not for the A D U.
But the livable portion.
Still is not.
But your foot, your overall square footage is still eighteen hundred in that case.
Eighteen hundred potentially, yeah. Which, if I had one of those in my backyard, would be six hundred square feet bigger than my house, so. Does it, and I raised this question the other day in regard to the Boyer one, does the Boyer one, does the new A D U become the primary structure because the square footage of the other one is small?
Uh, not currently, no.
No. Not until the owner moves into it.
Probably nice. Poke, poking around, it looked like nine hundred was sort of the standard in terms of what I was able to find around towns under fifty thousand. I don't, I don't know what you'd go to, I guess seven fifty, probably.
That's what I was.
Because you count from one bedroom.
So there were, I think there was a formula on that Coeur d'Alene language that you had.
Um, well, this, this, just to the, um, this is the language, um, uh, compatibility that they have. A D U design must be consistent with the existing roof pit, roof pitch siding windows of the prin- principal dwelling. Uh, but their code also they're at eight hundred square feet.
They are. And cannot exceed seventy-five percent of the total square footage of the primary dwelling.
Right.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Lord.
There's your answer.
I like that. Personally.
I do. So seventy-five percent? Up to, but not to exceed nine hundred?
And it also has some height, um.
Restrictions.
It had a very.
Twenty-four feet above a garage.
Yeah, but it had a, uh, and I, I didn't print it off, but it has a very, it has a calculation about the roof pitch, and they have a forty-five degree line, and you can't go, you know, so they do have some illustrations in there. Um. But theirs is actually more restrictive than ours currently.
Prior to the nine hundred, we were at six hundred, correct? It went from six hundred to nine hundred for the A D Us?
I believe so.
Six fifty, six, six fifty.
Yeah.
Nine hundred. It was six fifty. Very one to nine.
Yeah. And I said, it's too big, it's too big then.
I, just my, my thoughts on that is that the, um, I like the idea of adding something like the seventy-five percent square footage to the primary dwelling.
I do, too.
Because if you have a large home, you could have a large A D U, and it would look perfectly acceptable. But with a small home, it would not look.
Right.
Right.
It would look out of place, so that's one way that you can prevent that withoutness. Maybe you still reduce the size, maybe you don't, but by having it compared to the primary structure, I think that would make things more compatible with existing neighborhoods. My thoughts.
And I think, Commissioner, when you hook it back to, um, exiting from a requirement for one parking spot, then you create another two hundred and fifty square feet potentially for that A D U size. So then you have an oversized A D U, well, not according to code. Um, and then no parking, which potentially has a, creates another issue on the street.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I see bigger issues on the street and parking, you know, like, maybe there's one person that lives in a house and has four cars, but that's the, probably not an enforceable issue. But it does congest the neighborhood.
It does.
I'm not talking about you, Mo's.
Worried about by drives, driving teenagers.
And, and just, you know, we the best regulations are very straightforward, and it's kind of why we were trying to get to, we were, the, the direction was go nine hundred square foot two bedrooms, because people are calling this an office.
Right.
And it sounded, but if, we know it's probably acting as a bedroom. The same thing will happen if we say seventy-five percent, because they'll say, this is my A D U, and this is just storage over here. This is not my A D U. And then you've got to get into the whole you know, down the road, what are they going to turn this storage area into? So just something to consider is the more ways you make it easy for people to, uh, or to think about how they're going to get around it.
Um, but are folks doing that, are folks doing that now in terms of a nine hundred? Is it really a twelve hundred with three hundred feet of storage?
Um, or it's, well, it's nine hundred, and they're saying it is one bedroom, but the space that is a lo- very large office is likely a bedroom.
Yeah.
So it gets to the question of, do we regulate bedrooms? Or do we regulate square footage?
Yeah, I like this formula here for regulating square footage. And with the required parking spot.
And I think it'd be easy enough to say that that is the square footage of the structure. Not just of the A D U. I mean, like you say, if people are going to try to get around that by saying, well, yes, I did this, but that's not part of my A D U, that's storage, it'd be easy enough to say that is, is of the structure can only be seventy-five percent of the square footage, whether or not it's used as an A D U.
Lot coverage is forty percent regardless of density, right?
It's thirty-five in a single fan.
Is it? Okay, gotcha.
All right, well, um, we'll come back with additional language or options for things we have not yet decided on.
And I think.
We're closer.
I think we are close.
It sounds to me like the bottom line from, you know, the consensus of this group is that some of the current A D Us are too large. And they don't look compatible with the neighborhoods, and we would like to find some sort of language that can help prevent that.
Right, yeah, I actually think it's a bigger issue than a new building that's in some people's interpretation too high for the neighborhood, but fits code.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know, what do you think, Zach? Is there any wiggle room in this Coeur d'Alene thing?
I'll be honest, I've been thinking about the executive session coming up. We haven't been, but I'm having to expand. If you give me a little bit of.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to throw you out there. You didn't have to answer.
Back up, back up, just went to that last page. I was just curious. I saw recreational vehicles come up highlighted. I wanted to see what that was.
Uh, well, this was, um, we actually have this currently in the code. No house trailer recreational vehicle shall be used for human habitation on any property in any zone.
Got you.
And then it ends there. I added that because we do have properties that are permitted for recreational.
Right.
So I don't, I just added that because we do.
And there is no, uh, and there is no timeframe on that. It's like my uncle's in town, he's going to stay in my trailer for a week, but that would not be allowed based upon this, because there isn't a timeframe to it. It's just no human habitation period.
Or on the street parked and plugged in.
Right. Which we see quite regularly.
Yeah, what happens though, if you have company, it comes with an R V. They're traveling around, they stop, they stay in their R V or the trailer. Does that count then?
Uh, technically, it's not something, but I don't think it's something that's highly.
I mean, like.
Enforced.
I got two sets of kids that do the same, you know, like, they come, they're on vacation, they're pulling their trailer, and they stop and stay for two or three days, and.
You just.
Isn't there a toll on yourself?
Yeah, just blew yourself up.
I'm going to give them an out, though. Isn't there a forty-eight hour, you move it and you're good?
I think there is a time limit. I don't know what it is, but.
It's a forty-eight hour, and we do enforce R Vs on the street with people in. We do accommodate some in the summer. It's over a week is when.
I mean, these are in my yard, so I mean, it's not like it's on the street, but.
But you do see a lot of extension cords going into those R Vs parked on the streets.
Yeah, there's one in my neighborhood.
I was just going to say, right down in your neighborhood, there's one that's been there for quite a bit.
Yeah, long time.
I thought that camper was yours.
Yep, come on.
Just parking in front of somebody else, and then they don't know.
Okay.
So that is all I have, um, the A D Us for this evening.
Do Commissioners have any further questions for staff?
Uh, Mister Chairman.
Yes.
I think, I, I won't say that I don't like some of that other stuff that we've seen, but I, I feel like we could just keep going and going and going with a lot. I, I won't say that I don't like some of that other stuff that we've seen, but I, I feel like we could just keep going and going and going with a lot of. Like, we add something that's going to open up the door for other things that we're trying to prevent. Or it's going to open up, um, restrictions that we're not trying to, you know, be restrictive of, so. I think I'd have to think about, you know, adding much more, I do believe, I think nine hundred square feet is definitely enough, it's. If we scaled it back, now we have some that are already in existence that. I don't think it's very clean to do nine hundred when that happened, I. Kind of wonder what the discussion was on that, because it does seem very large. Especially in parts of town where the homes are seven hundred to a thousand square feet. Yeah, and I, I think with the design requirements as far as being compatible with the house that's there. I do think it is possible that a house could look totally different and still be appealing. Um, you know, tasteful or whatever, or the height, whatever was done, so. That's also opening up the door for being restrictive, but not allowing people to, you know. Do what they will on their property that is not, you know, out of code or out of, you know, illegal. Um, so I don't know, I feel like. Some of these things could be pretty good, but I can see, you know, if we say a bedroom limit, now all of a sudden there's going to be. Three bedrooms, because they're, and with nine hundred square feet, you could have two bedrooms and an office. And also, like, one of the pictures we saw. The design, architectural design showed like a lean to. Instead of supposed to be open, but it was obviously closed off in the, in the live picture. So. That's being used as a shed or something, and then how many people take the garage space in the bottom and then end up living in it too? I mean, not, not everybody, but. We're opening the door for that too. Which is not allowed, but yeah, down the road, twenty years, thirty years from now. That's. That's all on the table, I think, so. I don't know if we could ever restrict or allow enough or. I don't know, but some of them do, some things do to me stand out as being not a good idea. Um. Excessive, I think excessive in any way is probably always going to be not a, not cool, so I don't know, how do we put that in there? You know? Like. You know, staff gets to decide what's too much, like.
Right, if we don't want them.
Unreasonable. Well, that's the legal part, I don't know.
Is your, is your concern the, um, rolling back the square footage?
Um, I mean, I, I think rolling it back is definitely possible, and I don't think it would be a terrible idea, but. Um. But I.
Seventy five percent of the size of the structure.
Um. I guess the thoughts on that are, somebody has a small primary dwelling and now we've restricted what they could build, so. You know, in a way, we've restricted their rights that their neighbor. You know, just, you know, it's, it's like pre-existing conditions are against them. And. They could expand their primary dwelling or enclose a porch and get to the space that they want, because they. What would be twelve hundred square feet? For the primary, would equal nine hundred? That's right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alright, um, I think I did math last time and it was way off, so I'm going to be hesitant too much here. Uh, and twelve hundred isn't huge, so. Yeah, seventy five percent, I, we're, we're, we're still going to end up with nine hundred square feet, right?
Well, if you're, if you're twelve hundred and up, so you have an eight hundred, in this. Port lane formula, it's eight hundred. Or seventy.
Max.
Eight hundred max.
Yep.
Yeah. Which I, I. You know, I like that idea.
I do too.
This is a ratio reasonable.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, it's better.
And one of the things that kind of comes to light a little bit with this, so you're talking about twenty to thirty years out, I think we're talking five or ten years out. For a lot of it, because with the changing in demographics and more and more seniors and people like that. Coming about, you're going to see a lot more demand for. Smaller units, smaller places.
All above garages.
Yeah. I was just going to go to that, because we're doing, we're doing one up in Nelson, actually, two of them. And the demand up there is actually going away from up on garages because they want to be able to walk in off.
Makes sense.
Ground floor, so there's a major change, I think, coming about that you're going to see, seniors aren't going to want to walk.
Right.
Up to the top of a garage someplace. So.
Yeah, I saw that in that, um, attachment, they have that hundred and two page thing that.
Uh-huh.
I'm sure everybody read it.
I did.
Um. Of course you did. But it did have an emphasis on single structure or a single story.
Yeah.
For that reason.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think you're going to see more and more of that. Come about, I think we're just kind of going through a little bit of a change right now. I mean, I've got some family members that are in the building business and. In the last six months, they have not. Got a single permit for anything more than two bedrooms. Everything's being downsized. So.
Well, I, I think that was Molly's point was, if you didn't require. Parking for a single story A D U, you might get more single story groups. The fact that you're requiring parking for an A D U. Makes people want to put them up above a garage.
So, can you have it both ways? Can you have single story, no parking?
Right, and two store.
Two story, one parking.
Yeah, again, it's.
I don't, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, you certainly could.
If you, I think that's a good point, is when we require parking, it, it tells people, hey, I'm going to put it above the garage. Which. Because then the garage qualifies as a parking spot, right?
Or it may be their storage, we don't know.
But, but it qualifies under the.
It would qualify, you're right, yeah.
But one of.
And that, and, and of my most. My biggest fear is that we end up with a lot of them that are above garages and they look like they're just out of place. I think if they're all, if they're all single story, they could look way different than the primary residence and they're just not going to stick out as much. So. People will be more free to build what they want, as long as it isn't too. Too much taller.
Well. If I may, I think that's why we would put in those regulations of height limit and compatibility with the. Primary structure, so it wouldn't be out of place, like some of these ones that we see on North Boyer. For instance, um. To avoid that. This proportion.
In that case, I'm, I'm okay with removing the parking requirement for a single story. Yeah, I think it makes sense.
The, the other thing I would add to that is that, um, if it is a single story, I mean, the parking space, if it was a pervious surface, it would not. Count against the total coverage of the lot, correct?
Right, I mean.
So the parking space, if it's a pervious surface, it could be outside right next to a single story, as long as it's not an asphalt or concrete.
Right, exactly.
Unless it's.
Yeah, you, you can provide a surface parking space, just as well as.
But if it was. Impervious, it would count towards the total lot coverage.
Right.
Right.
And realistically, a parking space, even if it's gravel, is pretty compacted, that, it's pretty. At that point, it's not pervious anymore.
Does it count against the, the pervious, impervious surface?
Generally, the parking spaces do because we require them to be improved.
And if it is gravel, then.
If it's called a parking space, we would likely call it a, uh. We would count it towards the impervious area, but it's, but if you have an additional impervious area. You have, um, forty percent for your, or thirty five percent for your structure and forty percent for impervious area in addition. Or forty, forty.
Thirty.
Thirty in single family, so thirty five for structures plus thirty percent. Surface impervious areas. So you have to sixty five total. Impervious area in your lot.
No, no problem.
But there's a lot of new technologies, there's a lot of pervious pavers, pervious asphalt. There, I mean, it is more expensive, but it exists. Already, it's nothing that has to be invented, but. Which would be a way to still have a single story with a parking space next to it.
I don't know how you would enforce that, though, double, I mean, two story. But I mean, two story and you're assuming that they're going to get a garage, which most likely doesn't happen, so. So, single structure, no parking, go two story A parking, is that what I'm understanding? Yeah.
That's what I said.
I didn't know. Yeah.
What, what do you, what do you think?
I mean, earlier on, we had said we wanted to keep it. As is.
Yeah.
One, one to one, now I'm hearing something different.
Yeah.
Well, that again encourages people to say a single story and not.
Think so, though, I wouldn't think so.
Well, the only thing that I can see as possibility is that if you're in a fifty foot lot and it's a five foot setback from the side. And. Well, it doesn't matter from the back, so thirty foot long, so thirty five, forty, forty five, fifty, so you still have. Alright, thirty five, forty, forty, you still have fifteen feet of space. And if your garage is twenty five feet, why do you have a fifteen by twenty five that. Pulls into the total pervious. So if you have a gravel parking spot back there. And that's a seven hundred and fifty square foot house at, uh, thirty by twenty five. Right on the number almost. With that. Eight hundred.
Well, personally, I think what we'll look in, I mean, other, because I think the commission was one for one, that it is part of, so we'll have to just. Come up with other ways to incentivize. The single story A D U's versus two story. Part of it will be this restriction on pers- you know, proportionality.
Yes, I think that will make a difference.
And I, I think that's the right way to present it too, is incentivizing it.
If the. If the two story A D U could not be. Um. Over a garage that was over nine hundred square feet and it couldn't be as big as the garage. It would. It would put it into a category where it would be more of a steeper pitch roof instead of having. The full second story and a pitch roof that's going to end up being thirty feet or, or whatever it ends up.
There was an example that you had of, um, a larger garage and a smaller A D U on top.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, it was, uh, like seven sixty eight and five something, I, I didn't, I couldn't figure that one out without seeing.
Yeah, if you could pull that up, maybe.
Trust. So some were the. The wa- the, the walls of the A D U are. Inside.
Oh, like a knee wall.
Yeah.
Cause that's a story and a half.
Yeah, none of these are showing that.
Yeah, um, it was. Go to the next one, I think it is the next one, it's that one.
Yep.
So seven eighty versus five eighty six, so seven eighty on the bottom. Eighty, five eighty six, and that looks like about a story and a half.
Right, so it can be done.
Twenty three feet.
It can be done.
So the incentive would be. Your, your parking spots below you.
Yeah, can be done.
So right now, you could do a nine hundred, well, you could do a. However big a garage you want, as long as you could fit it in the lot, and then you could do nine hundred on top of whatever, it could be two thousand maybe. And then. You could have a monstrosity A D U with five car garage, right?
Yes, you could.
Yeah. So maybe there's a way to.
Like a lot, you could do that.
Maybe, maybe getting away from allowing the A D U to be the same. Full second story as the garage below it.
Say that again.
So nine hundred square foot garage, nine hundred foot square, square foot A D U, not allowed. Seventy five percent, something like that.
But if it's a twelve pound, hundred square foot house, it would be allowed.
Four hundred square foot garage.
Opposing something different, what, what are you trying to mitigate? It's a separate requirement.
I can get where he's going with that.
The A D U, the garage versus.
The only way to have a full second story is if it's under nine hundred. How, like the, the chestnut or was it walnut street where they're, they're like four hundred and fifty or less. And they're a full second story on top of a. A garage, like a single car garage.
And the amazing thing is those are all on twenty five foot lots.
Right.
Then let me, and let me ask you a question, what is, what, what is our timing on developing? Um, any kind of new guidelines for A D U's? Is there any kind of time constraint we're working under?
Long as it takes.
Okay.
Till we're comfortable with sending it to council.
It's a work in, got you, so it's a work in progress, there is no deadline set on that sort of thing.
This is not.
Jumping the gun on a comprehensive plan, but we know.
Got you.
But that's okay, right, can be added in later.
Next top of our list will be food truck regulations, so.
There we go. I hope that comes with samples.
My lighthouse is here.
Should have reminded me, Wayne.
Alright.
Alright, then.
I don't know if I have a whole thought with that, but, but I like the idea of somehow. There, there could, I feel like there could be a way that we're restricting the first floor of the garage. So that the upper floor doesn't turn into nine hundred square feet. I don't know, maybe that's the opposite of what it should be, but.
If you shorten the height.
Like you can't build nine hundred square feet on top of nine hundred square feet.
But. As of now, they're, it's okay to have nine hundred square feet.
But we could change that. And maybe that's what I'm saying, if, you can do single story nine hundred square feet, but second story. There's just no, like. Technically, maybe it's possible, but there's like no way possible because a lot isn't big enough or something like that. Or you're not going to build a fourteen hundred square foot garage, maybe.
So if you, and Mo's maybe you can, if you go back to the picture above it. Um. Would they have different square footages top to bottom? Um, no, one down.
Oh, one down.
Number seven, how about we do that?
That one.
Yeah, so, is that bottom? Is that, do you think that's twelve feet with a?
It is, look at the scale on the side, looks like it's about a twelve foot.
A twelve foot bottom?
It's probably like ten.
No, the bottom's probably about ten foot. Garage.
Yeah, just going by that window.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Which that's not an excessively tall garage, that's.
That's normal, not normal. A ten foot ceiling.
And that makes the upper floor ceiling about eight feet. This is not a nine hundred square foot garage either, it's seven eighty, so.
Right.
If it was nine hundred, then that would, the, the upper. A D U part would be. Six fifty. Seven hundred, maybe at the most. Going by that standard. So if they're allowed to build a single story nine hundred square feet with no parking requirement, then how many are going to be nine hundred square feet? On a single, single story, as opposed to, you can build a second story, but. About the biggest you could go is seven hundred, or whatever the number comes out to. So then people are discouraged from. Going big and tall and like. Vertical, the whole, the whole way.
Something to think about.
But it probably makes the language a lot more complicated, and I was just arguing against that.
Well, the language you look for would be, you're looking for the ratio of. The underlying or original structure. The new structure can't be beyond seventy five percent of that square footage.
Yeah, for a second.
Are you restricting square footage or are you restricting heights? So are you restricting square footage or are you restricting heights or both?
Well, it's both, but.
Yeah.
You're trying to mitigate. Monstrous boxes from being.
I think that's what we all are doing, you know.
What's our current height limit?
Thirty five.
Five.
Same as the district.
Thirty five.
Or forty in the multiple. So the one is the, this, this is probably the one of the tallest we have and it's thirty three. So it is not as tall as it could be.
Yikes.
Seeing on that one, the ADU's smaller than the garage also.
And you know, I don't know why that is unless it's the front porch.
It does have the inside of the porch. And then I think they have what they call storage area. Or is that in the garage?
The porch is rather large.
Hmm.
Second story. But the garage is all one big. Three car garage.
Okay. Wow. We'll keep working on it.
Yes, we will.
Thanks, Amy.
Are we okay to move on, folks?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay. Uh, the final item on the agenda is an executive session and I will enter. In in executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy four dash two oh six one F for the purpose of communicating with city legal counsel to discuss. The legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated.
This will be a roll call vote.
Yes, roll call vote.
With support, sorry.
Missed the second. She moved second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Cam?
Yes.